Good evening, welcome to our school board meeting. It's Monday, June 13th, 2022, six o'clock. Let's just tell the lives in order, the agency seven building, call them to order.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Gayheart?
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Here.
Mr. Martel?
Here.
O'Connell?
Here.
Mrs. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Scarrow?
Here.
Do have a call and we will continue and we'll note that tonight's meeting has been known as state statutes. Did we have any communication? There's nobody here, so.
Nobody here. I did not receive any email letter requests.
Alright, so we'll dispense with reading that and go to approval of our minutes. Regular session from May 23rd and then closed session from 25th. Questions, comments, concerns? I hear you, Nady. I guess we'll do one at a time.
I'll move to approve the minutes of May 23, 2022, regular session, school board meeting as presented.
Second?
So move in second to approve the minutes of May 23rd, 2022, regular session of the school board meeting as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
I move to approve the minutes of the May 25th, 2022, closed session, school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
So move in second to approve the minutes of the May 25th, 2022, closed sessions or meeting as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Abstain.
Mr. Martel?
I'll abstain. I don't have a copy.
Apologies for that. Uh, Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. General other fund bills, Mr. Trill, but the general other fund bills this evening, coverage checks number 146365 through 146546. Wire transfer numbers 1303 and 1603 and 1606 through 1614. ACH numbers 614 through 656 and option renovation project wire number 1604 and 1605. The combined amount of $1 million, $317,591.91. There was a memo providing some additional information on the bill listing. And then following the bill listing is a copy of the treasurer's report from the month of April. And Jason, if you'd be so kind as to kind of scroll all the way down, I just wanted to share with the board the treasurer's report section. There's a, like if you go two more pages up, um, one more page up. Uh, there's, this is our cash position statement, so you see for each of our funds. I just wanted to point out our Fund 43, which is our whole pack account. That's the balance we have and there's about $755,000. And as we talk about the budget tonight, I'm gonna reference that a little bit in terms of potentially looking at starting using those funds, which were designated for retirement benefits. So.
I believe there's a, just a, there's a typo on now, it's just.
I was gonna say, let me, yeah.
Yeah. Fund 73.
Oh, is it 73 on 43? Okay.
Yeah, it said 43, it's 73. Yeah.
Yeah, 43 is the building reserve, right?
That's one of them, yeah. Yeah, Fund 40s are all building funds.
So what is checking, what's the cash management series? What is that?
That's through PMS or the Wisconsin investment. So it's the type of investments, usually short-term treasury bills. So that's where we hold like, um, our monies that we have available to invest before we use those proceeds.
Okay.
So. So we usually use the WIS or the local government investment pool. Those are the two kind of authorized investment pools. And state statute kind of dictates the type of investments.
Right, that we can do.
It's pretty limited in terms of, it's mostly AAA related, bank securities.
Yeah.
Government issued securities, so.
Yeah. Fine.
Questions, Mr. Trill?
I was just, on the, the, the next page, um, I was asking, we've got school activity income is.
Way up.
Way up. So was it, what was, I mean, it's not relatively that much money in the scheme of things, but their percentage is really big. So what would be included in there that made it go up so high?
Yeah, which, which category are?
That is the school activity income.
That would be, uh, funds for, um, like athletic events, gate receipts. So.
So maybe more people came this year to this income last year.
So it adjusted in the last couple of years because the attendance was down. So now that's come back up.
So it's, it's really kind of false.
Correct. It's kind of back to what it used to be.
Right, right. That's why I'm saying it's pretty false. Got it. Alright.
Yeah, that's a great question.
Um, what has caused us to be in such a, a much better cash position? Pretty much through the whole, through the year.
Through the whole year. And, and part of that is we're being a little more proactive in getting reimbursements. We're all around grants and we have so many more with the federal grants this year. Plus we got the governor's CARES Act funds that came in December. That was 400 and some thousand dollars that we really didn't anticipate.
Yeah.
So that helps in terms of our cash flow.
Okay. Cause I mean, compared to a couple of other years, it's almost double where we've funded.
Yeah. Part of it's just the increase in the fund balance.
Okay.
So yeah, our cash position, in fact, usually right this time of year, early June, we're looking at tapping into our, um.
Right.
Private fund?
Right, right.
We're kind of looking at that now saying, well, we're gonna get our state aids on the 20th, which is only a week trip today. So can we get through the payroll this week?
Well, that's, that was gonna be my next question is, are we gonna have to even do that this year? Okay, so that's.
We did back in December.
That's a, right, but that's a savings for us because we're not paying interest.
Correct. And part of that also includes, I'll call it our food service fund within that cash flow. And our food service fund is doing very well.
Okay.
And, and part of that you'll see in, in the budget is the reimbursement rate we're getting today. And again, remember it's universal lunch, so everyone gets reimbursed irregardless of free or reduced. It's $4.65 per meal. And two years ago, if you were in a free lunch status, it was $3.40. And for holy price, you got reimbursed 40 cents. So, so the amount of reimbursement we're getting right now through that, and it's been now two plus years.
And that's at the federal level?
That's federal level. Now that's gonna end in July.
Yeah.
But the amount of resources coming through, and every district has seen that, because it's the same rate for anyone who's participating in the lunch program. It didn't matter their status, it's the same rate as. So that's a huge difference.
Okay.
So that's helped our cash flow too.
Got it, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So they didn't want it.
Right, right.
Right. I mean.
There's some districts in our conference that don't do the federal lunch program.
Maybe they don't wanna do the paperwork because of.
Waterford.
Oh, I think you have a big deal up there.
Yeah.
Other, other questions?
No. What are you not saying, Jason?
I, the superintendent, even girl was surprised when we were all getting free lunches. He's like, how are you guys getting free lunches for your kids? Oh, because they don't do the federal program, so they.
Oh, they didn't.
So they didn't even know that they were getting, that all these other people were getting free lunches for.
Got it.
Students for the last two years.
Questions?
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of June 13th, 2022. Check numbers 146365 to 146546. Wire numbers 1603 and 1606 to 1614. ACH numbers 614 to 656 and options renovation project wire numbers 1604 to 1605. In the combined amount of $1 million, 317,591.91. As presented.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
So move in second into approve the general and other fund bills of June 13th, 2022, checks numbered 146365 to 146546. Wire numbers 1603 and 1606 to 1614. ACH check, ACH numbers 614 to 656 and options renovation project wire number 1604 to 1605. In the combined amount of $1 million, 317,591.91.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
New courses.
Alright, Mrs. Bosch, I believe you, would you like to review the new courses for the board? Or would you like me to go through those?
Sure. I didn't know I was doing that. I can.
I'll let you go ahead since you work within the department and it's, uh, your work there. We did review the new course proposals with the policy committee earlier today and we're forward to the, the board for a proposal. We had spoke in principle, I believe, months ago about this proposal to, um, grant credit in different areas depending on where the kids are working within the musicals that the schools do. So I don't wanna steal all your thunder there, but Mrs. Bosch worked with the departments and, uh, they put together a very good proposal for a number of course areas. So I'll turn over to you, Mrs. Bosch.
Sure. So, um, we have four, um, performing arts proposals. One for theater arts, one for a musical theater, um, one for theater stagecraft, and then one for dance for a musical theater. And it's really all about, um, the different opportunities that students have within, um, the theatrical productions and, um, the musical productions to be able to get credit for the work that they're doing, um, in those, uh, performing arts. So, um, we're asking our students, um, to put together, um, a, uh, 200 to 300 word reflection on specifically what they might be working on. So if like their stage crew, or if they're working on their acting skills, or if they're working on, um, their musical talents. Um, and self-assess, um, their learning and their growth over the course of that production, whether it be a, a musical or whether it be, um, theatrical. And then reflect on that. And then, um, the students will have to, um, be a part of all of the scheduled rehearsals. Um, and put in at least 30 hours of participation, uh, to be able to get that quarter credit for each production that they participate in, uh, for a total of two full credits.
That they can earn up over the course of the four years.
Correct.
And they have to have a 90% attendance rate. I, you know, the policy committee, I didn't have the syllabus. I didn't link it in the board notes now. So if you look in there, there's a copy of that. Those courses would be taken as a pass or fail. Um, really excited that at least those students will get to have that on their transcript, their elective credits. But it's something that they'll be able to demonstrate that they've been a part of. Um, then the other course that's up for approval is the digital media design and production, which is kind of bringing back similar to what was known previously as, as yearbook. Students in this course would be learning all of those concepts. I believe they'd also be participating in the construction of the yearbook, correct, Sarah?
That's correct.
And, um, but that would be a course, um, in the English language arts, but it wouldn't be fulfilling one of the required. It would be an elective course.
What is the credit for that one?
Yeah.
I forgot.
Yeah, what's the credit for that?
Is that a, that's a one trimester or is that a two trimester, Sarah? Is that a count or a fall?
Just one.
It's a one.
Just a one.
Yeah.
So I have credit. Um, but was that one that they could take up to four times?
Yeah.
So similar to some of our other courses, they could repeat because they then would have a level to do. Yeah. Take that up to four times throughout their school.
And what would be? Kind of the. I mean, obviously they're producing the yearbook, but is there any other requirement for them to earn that credit in terms of participation?
Well, that's an actual class, so it's part of the.
Oh, it is an actual class.
Yeah, I have the same question.
Okay, so it's not, it's not an extracurricular.
Correct.
It's during the school day, they would take that.
Okay, got it.
That's a good question. Alright.
Yeah, that was, that was one of the things I wanted to clarify is calling them courses. Uh, other than the, the yearbook, basically, the media one, they're not a structured class, uh, themselves, but they're acquiring of credit transfer kind of. And I think we've already got a precedent set and I, I would like to be consistent with it. And Jason, you did approve the syllabus outline thing that explains a little bit more. But it's, it's good to see those, uh, students get the opportunity to be recognized for their participation and achieve some credits there. But what I would like also to look into a little deeper then, since those are, um, kind of like the, the half-credit of PE, um, waiver credit, uh, by participating in the sport. There's other arenas I think that we have to be consistent with, whether it's the students with the FFA and the summer work that they do with the fairgrounds and the, the things like that, or the autos club, or things like that, when, when it's up to two credits. But I think with that Zello program, it's, it's a great way to recognize the achievements that they've done and immerse, uh, other opportunities into their pathways. Um, but I, I think we want to be consistent and then reward all students, uh, not just the fine arts, but all of those, uh, the students that are in the state and national, um, uh, DECA and HOSA and, uh, FCC LA and things like that. I think we want to broaden that if we're going to move forward with this.
I, I, that was my concern, was is this setting a precedent for other, you know, extracurricular activities like what Paul mentioned and ENS and sports.
Could be. And I'm not opposed to those other departments if they wanted to propose something similar and they felt the workload was there. The amount of time and the consistency, which I definitely think in certain areas, it is there. Yeah. So those could certainly be proposed or brought forward like the fine arts or the musical production. Yeah, as in this case. And we do have it for physical education. If you really look at it, we give credit for work study, youth apprenticeships, those type of applications as well. For those type of experiences.
So. Is. It, so they're only able to earn a total of two credits during, during the four years? So is it any combination of those or can?
They would have to do every musical on four years.
I understand that, but I'm, my, my question is if, if they're participating in say two of these.
Yeah, so that would be if they did every single musical all four years, that would be eight musicals. Could they earn four credits in the dance and four credits in the theater arts? I wouldn't have a problem with that, that I would think that if a kid wanted to each quarter. That was my understanding, Sarah, is that it was a maximum of two credits within one of the categories, correct? So theoretically.
We did put a limit on it. We did say up to two, up to two credits total within four years of involvement.
For all, for all arenas though? So if they use the, the FIED one and the fine arts one and two total encompassing that? Or two in the fine arts, two in the PE, two in the. I think, I think that's what we have to refine and make sure it's consistent. So that when my career path is, um, being supported by the apprenticeships and I'm getting the credits, I can also do that and not be held to the two, two credit, uh, maximums. So I think we just have to be clear with that and realize it's really not a class, but it's a credit affiliation for participation, building their resumes and things like that with that Zello program. I think it'll be a fantastic, um, support network there for them to, to, uh, uh, do the, the paperwork on that to show where their journeys are going. But I think we also have to, uh, look into making sure that that's not overextending the, the credits. I know they still have to get their, their basic, uh, credits for science, math, English and things, but, um, I don't want to limit students into what they participate in either. But if we're rewarding them for their, their journey, I think then we have to recognize all journeys.
Eight electas total, so this would only be two of their eight. They would still be.
Yeah, the two credits is just right, this fine arts course sequence. That's it.
Yeah.
So that one, for good, PE has a half-credit limit. That's the state statute. As a school board, because physical education is a required, um, by state statute graduation requirement from the PI a credit and a half, which they're allowed to waive up to a half-credit via participation co-curriculars at the school board. For my side or allows them.
And it has to go back into, the waiver has to go back into any push map, science, social studies.
Yeah.
So there's even limits on how the state allows that waiver to play in, so.
Yeah, and that one's governed because physical education is a state requirement. Yeah. This is not, this is selected, so we have a lot more flexibility anyway. So I hope this would be precedent setting in some of those other areas and we can explore that with those other departments. Yeah, it gives a good outline and a framework for us to look at it.
Sure.
From an hour space, we base the hours more similar to like a apprenticeship or work study formula. Because when we did the calculation, Sarah, I mean, it was two hours a day. I believe it was 120 hours per musical, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Much more, 120 than a trimester level class, which is a half-credit. So it is more in line with from a time standpoint of like a apprenticeship.
I guess my question. I mean, I probably didn't explain it well, but so is somebody, is somebody able to double up within the same, even same musical? Could they have theater art credit and theater stage cr- stagecraft credit? Or doing the, the same, or is it only limited to one quarter credit per musical?
The way that it's written, it's intended to be just one quarter credit per musical. And oftentimes the kids, if you kind of look at the descriptions of each, they really kind of specialize in one of those areas, if that makes sense anyway. I think it would be hard to do a focus on like stage crew if you're working on your acting skills as being one of the, the lead actors, if that makes sense.
Here, Sarah, it says that a minimum of 30 hours of participation. So they could make the case that if it's 120 hours, I'd do more than one. I understand that what you're saying.
Yeah. I, I just, I just don't want to, I, I'm not in favor of giving them more than one quarter credit per, per musical.
That was the intent, was just one quarter credit, so we can make sure.
Can we put that?
We can be explicit in the language if we need to be.
I guess I'd be more comfortable with that.
Because it would be all different five years from now. Someone needs to know.
We'll make sure to put that in language, a maximum of 0.25 credits per musical.
Okay.
And they can choose one of the areas to focus.
Yeah.
Questions?
Um, I move to approve the new high school course proposal as modified.
Is there a second?
Second.
So move in second to approve the new high school course proposal as modified.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. The board discussion is Mr. Branson, entitlements, Mr. Trill. Yeah, just put this together, um, to share with the board. It really was, I guess, probably came out of the discussion we had at the last meeting about the grant writer position. And a couple of board members asked about what do we have for grants? And so I thought, this, this is an internal document that really just kind of summarizes the grants that we have right now. So it's just more as information and the type of grants, the amounts. And I put them into categories and the, the top categories, we kind of use the term entitlement. Um, and, and there are allocations that are controlled at the federal level based on, um, free or reduced, poverty level, uh, census information. So we're allocating certain amount of dollars. And as long as we follow the criteria and how we can use those monies to develop our budget, do our reporting, those amounts become available to our school district. And most districts, you know, receive maybe these similar types of grants in terms of the title. The ester ones obviously are one-time funds that we got as a result of the pandemic. And then the flow-through, which is mostly the special ed. So those are kind of those entitlements. Then what follows that in the, like purple are more of the competitive grants. And obviously they're focused on education, but it just gives you kind of a sense of the dollars involved and, um, the type of, uh, grants that we have. And actually, I think I just added two or three at the bottom of that sheet just recently because we rewarded several project leave away grants, uh, the option schools, each of the elementaries. And then the CCA, um, program also received, it has a five-year grant for $400,000. So, um, just wanted to kind of share this more, which is a general report. And below that are additional kind of entitlements based on participation. It's mostly food service, but also Medicare, Medicaid, we get reimbursement based on, um, the type of programs that we offer our special education students. So we can get claim units of cost and get reimbursed for those expenses. And it certainly is worth our time to go through the paperwork and generate that kind of revenue. Anyway, it was just general information, so.
An overall bill about, is it about 5% of our annual school budget that gets made up by the entitlements? And it's taking out the CARES Act.
Taking out the CARES Act, uh, typical. It's not a huge percentage. You're absolutely right, so.
Which, it's centering because education is a state-controlled. It's, there's no constitutional right to education. It's all in the state constitutions. And so the federal government does, you know, to move education in directions that it wants is it gives us care. And that care is only roughly 5% of the budget. So that's a big enough care for states not to bypass on it. When No Child Left Behind came out, I remember Hawaii and the state of Utah were like, that's it. We're not gonna participate, keep your federal dollars. And then after some time, they're like, oh, we can't afford not to take their dollars. But it's just that 5% care that, it's amazing the hoops that we jump through to get that 5%.
If you add it in the food service component, that probably would increase that percent.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Those are great large numbers, too.
Yeah.
Um, I do want to highlight, let me go back to this real quick because I want to give a lot of credit to Mrs. Dimraff, who was the author, the primary author of the Youth Bill Grant, which was 900,000 over four years. Um, the charter school grant, she was the author for that expansion grant for CCA as well, which was $750,000. And then she was also, or the school was awarded, but she was the author for the, um, community learning center, which this will be used to carry on. We did not get awarded that youth bill grant cycle, which wasn't surprising because Beloit didn't get it last year. So it threw them back into this year's cycle. So Beloit did get it this year. So we're hoping to rewrite next year and get it next year. But it's a very competitive grant. But regardless, this was written as a backup to still provide coverage for the staff and everyone who do youth build use. So, um, they'll help cover and offset the salaries for the youth build site coordinator and also our school's work director, um, which is covered by the youth book grant. So thank you, you know, and I know there's a lot of others there, but nobody, the, the amount of the size of the words that she's written.
This evening, um, the board is, uh, seeing a first reading of the preliminary 2022, 23. This evening, um, the board is seeing a first reading of the preliminary two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three preliminary budget. I put together kind of an introductory paragraph or two, but you can kind of read that. It's pretty self-explanatory, talks a little bit about the careers we're operating in and potential maybe challenges facing public education in the future when the S R dollars kind of run out. But if you go to the next page, it gives kind of the highlights where the second year of of the two-year state budget, which as you're well aware, provides no increase in our revenue cap for this year nor next year, no increase in what's called the per people aid for both years. The other thing that affects us quite a bit is the open enrollment amount. We'd seen some pretty large adjustments per year, almost dollar increases in three hundred, three hundred and fifty dollars for for regular ed and and almost three hundred dollars for the special ed. And and this year it's thirty-six dollars and next year it's sixty-three dollars. So those are are pretty significant changes. More money in the formula for equalization aid, although you'll see later on that it doesn't mean necessarily more money for our school district based on how the formula works. So there's some more money for special ed reimbursement. They're estimating that to go up to almost thirty percent next year depending on costs. It's always prorated because they have some certain in the budget at the state level. So you can get prorated down from that. Mental health grants and then really I think what we're hearing out in Madison is use S R funds to fill in the budget gaps, which is really what this budget has. Student enrollment, usually I I think in past budgets, we have demonstrated some additional increase in the enrollments here. Resident or open enrollment. This year, I think we looked at resident, open enrollment, resident membership because ours did go down this year by a few students. We just assumed it wasn't going to probably go up next year. And open enrollment, um, we have a number of seniors that are graduating this year. I think it's like eighty-five students that will be leaving the program this year. So just filling that with new students, uh, I think we're using more than the status quo kind of conservative approach. So no additional increase at this point.
It's roughly thirty percent of our graduating class were open enrollment this year.
Yeah, and my, I guess I was going to ask, how are we in a Delvin starting their own?
Programs?
Program two, and now are we going to start using kids back to Delvin because of that?
We haven't seen that, but I think sooner or later.
Somewhere along, right, could.
There's not going to be a, or there's got to be a certain point where you just don't, you know, that mobility isn't there. I think Delvin's doing some really nice things and so forth. Our regular open enrollment period, we had ninety applications. And it's down a little bit from what we would typically have in a regular open enrollment period. But we've seen our largest influx of new students comes after July one and that alternative open enrollment.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, we'll see. And I know C C A has, they're projecting to be pretty much at their max capacity or pretty close to it. That hundred and fifty is what we're going to have been down. So and of those graduates, we got to keep in mind because they haven't really moved to the, while it's open, the ninth through twelfth graders, C C A is still very heavy junior seniors. And so they have seven, seventy-plus graduates, thirty-five of which approximately would have been open enrollment. So of that eighty-five seniors, thirty-five probably came from C C A. And you have options who had another thirty, their largest senior group ever. And a significant percentage of them open enrollment. There, there's a lot more, I want to say volatility negatively, just a lot of transition yet. And then they graduate two years later. So we see a lot of that new open enrollment is only here to. Yeah, but I I think that's an area that we're, it's competitive for, you know, and keeping programs relevant and so forth and having, you know, that there. But but that's looking good, but I I do, Bill and I talked about this sometime, certainly we got it. So we continue to look at expanding markets, which we've tried to do at the open enrollment. COVID kind of, and I would say throw a wrench in that because it spiked it really quick, but throw a wrench in figuring out what our natural trend is.
Right, right, right.
Because it's going to show up so fast.
Some other revenue items, as I mentioned before, we're really looking at utilizing our entire S R two, S R three months next year to help balance the budget and and using some of the monies, the CARES monies we got with Governor Evers as well, really just kind of fill in that that budget gap. One of the things we're looking at, we've done this in the past, the the transfer service provision does allow us to increase our revenue gap. And we have students that move into our district that have I E P, special ed needs or E L services. And that happens throughout the year, although we can't claim it until September. So many times we'll do that claim in September and then during like this year, we'll have students move in that may require one-on-one aids and and we have to fill those needs. But now we're kind of going back and requesting a transfer service after the fact. So most of the staffing pieces you're going to see here is transfer service, basically. So if you, if you go to the next page, Jason, it kind of looks by level. You'll see the the specialized aids that we're hiring and many of these people are already hired. Because there were students that moved in during this year that needed to be hired one-on-one aids. And then additional E L A, the elementary, middle school, also looking at half-time E L teacher and aid to address those needs. We have a math overload, which I believe is a two semester. High school looking at part-time art teacher based on student requests for the arts courses. And then also looking at a half-time tech ed teacher. I believe with the additional tech ed teacher, we'll have some offset reduction in overload as well. So it would be, then that must be a little less than that. C C A, again, with students moving in, uh, special ed teacher as a transfer service. Some additional school site costs, we did higher additional position this year. We had a grant that offset most of that, but not necessarily all of that. Again, looking at some other special ed needs, speech and language services, interpreter for students moving into our district that needs an interpreter. Looking at adjusting utility fuel budgets, and I put in a figure of about a hundred thousand dollars. Right now, looking at how our utility bills are coming in, fuel, I'm not even sure that's going to be enough. Yeah, that's what we, you know, they don't want to over budget. One of the areas we'll, we'd have to adjust is is just the fuel for our school buses. Even though we're contracted and we have rate increases, we buy the fuel. And we've been fortunate to have pretty low fuel prices for a number of years, uh, and that's changing. Also included, which would be a fund eighty, is looking at that new community grant position that we talked about the last board meeting. And then some additional student club and extracurricular groups would be an adjustment fund eighty as well.
Which one of that is that community extracurricular?
The, the additions include adjustments for the youth football program. There's a rotary club, okay, what's that called? I remember.
Can you call it, I don't know, it was probably ten bars, two clubs?
Yeah. And then, and then the, uh, I want to call it the weight.
Oh, right. Oh, yeah. The community base one.
In the community.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. And I think it's detailed in a different page here. We can kind of go through that as well. General highlights, uh, we're looking at adjustments as the board's approved in terms of salary and wages of four percent. So that's reflected in the budget, the student transportation at three percent in terms of our rates. Health insurance, we're anticipating an increase. We can stay within that ten percent amount that would be in January of this year. And this general inflationary adjustments, like all of our purchase services, supplies and equipment, we adjusted those about three percent, which is probably, you know, doesn't even need any inflation increases, quite honestly. Overall budget increases about four percent. We're looking at a reduction in equalization aid, and that's due to the fact that our property values this year increased over nine percent, but our student resident membership went down. So the amount of property value behind each and every student went up, which to the formula says you're more of a property-rich school district, so you don't need as much state support. That's basically the formula that works.
So are we deceasing them or decreasing them?
Decreasing. Yeah.
So deceased.
Yeah. So the other. Yeah, it does say deceased. It says deceased.
It's probably spelled wrong.
What else do, the other, kind of why I'm kind of with with the state equalization is, that's always an estimate based on what's called the state budget reports that our school districts have to send to the state. The D P I changed the format for that this year and the system that they have isn't working. So a number of districts didn't submit a report, so there's really no data to go by in terms of what that state is going to look like. I hope to be somewhat conservative right now. If if it's more, offset would be a reduction in the levies, basically. So with that, uh, the total, you know, levy increases prior, largest increase that we've seen in a number of years.
I know, I kept going back to that page.
It's almost six percent. But a good chunk of that is a reduction in state aids. And then the transfer service amount and then the fund eighty, you add those three together, that's where the increase is.
People need to stop overpaying for their property. But that, that is a lot, though.
Because the equalized value is based on market value, so it looks at sales prices.
Right.
Yeah, exactly. So, um, tax rate, no rate, uh, looking at twenty-three cents per thousand. There's a sheet later on that gives a little more detail. And I think I assumed the valuations of property would increase three percent next year, which I hope is conservative and may represent more true property, new property growth, tax base growth as opposed to this market adjustment. The next page then kind of shows the the budget detail relative to this year's, next year, and then the projected. And the one thing I wanted to point out is there's a line there and it's the green line that shows the Governor Evers monies and then our O P E B dollars. And the O P E B dollars, we talked about the Treasurers Report, had about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Those monies within the O P E B are set aside to be used to pay the paid, the earn-as-you-go retireable benefits each year. And if we're looking at our forecast model of beginning to use those monies in the next couple of years, it makes sense now to start transferring those over to our general fund. Because if we waited another year, the actual yearly obligation isn't going to equal that seven hundred and fifty-five thousand. So if we start moving those monies now, it will be at that level, we'll be in those spots. So what I was going to propose to do is is really bring that as a recommendation of the net score. It's not on here yet, so.
Was there a place, Bill, that we haven't just thrown out now that you wanted to?
Uh, probably not, Jason, I don't think it's going to probably matter at this point. I don't know, can you get a different view than that? There you go. So again, you can see in the net chart, we're using our S R dollars and kind of that blue line, S R two, S R three, and then using some of the CARES Act to really balance, balance our budget.
So that five million that's in the forecast for twenty-four, twenty-five, what's that?
Well, that's, again, in a projection, if we were to go to the public and request they see our revenue cap to help balance our budget, that's, that's what that shows. And and the projection also assumes a two hundred dollar boost to an increase in the revenue cap for the next two years after this by hand. Yeah, and of course, we won't know what that looks like, probably.
Yeah, I I did have a chance to speak with both legislators now, and they both indicated that they know that they're going to have to do something, that there's a significant surplus because they closed revenue on these first schools. They neither would give me kind of a solid estimate, you know, as to why or how much. They also indicated that some of their constituents within their own party will maintain the school shouldn't get anything extra, make them go vote it, you know, take it in referendum. So that being said, I think two hundred is probably a very conservative number, but they definitely six hundred or it would be a very aggressive number, so. I, that was the feel I got from them. I also asked, well, why'd you do that? Didn't get great answers from either why they thought it was a great idea, but got a little bit of an inclination that years ago, there were federal stimulus dollars that were released and there was a concern that at that time, schools used those dollars to expand their spending by adding staff, adding things to their overall budget. And then the federal dollars went away and the schools were like, we don't have enough money to operate, we need more money. Because they lived outside of their means, this is a high interpretation of it. In that perspective, and so there was a sentiment that, well, if we don't increase anything, the schools will have to spend their S R dollars to get by and maybe they won't spend as much and not have such a cliff on the, the back end.
And those dollars that Jason was referencing came about after the housing crash.
The housing crash. So. I don't know, that was as much as I I could get. And, you know, I will miss having, you know, Representative Lambach has always been very responsive, very good, and Representative August as well in responding and speaking. I know Lambach is moving on to run for Secretary of State, but I know we passed our work together on a number of bills that we've managed to pass. And yeah, so I I hope whoever her replacement is will be pragmatic and responsible. Which I'll pardon, I don't care.
Uh, one came to talk to the town. Very inexperienced, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I was just going to say, who is?
Mary Zimmerman.
Oh, yeah.
From, she's also school board member in Whitewater. And then Amy Lambach's former aide is also running. There's someone from Alphorn, but I saw a flyer. That was running, but I don't know how many are officially, I believe there's also a gentleman in primary, it's white.
Well, the ballots aren't done totally yet, so even if you go to Whistler, you're not going to see the names. I know, but you can figure it out. No, I went on one state website and didn't see any names.
They'll play a lot, though, and I'll bet that physical fitness is what they do with revenue. And my guess is they they may keep it revenue limit dollars, they did kind of took their, we may see more aide because they prefer to do it in a, I don't know, that it makes, it assures equal distribution across everywhere. Because revenue limit.
Yeah.
Property-rich districts. Get less state aid from it, more the burn goes on the local taxpayer. So if they give it in the categorical aid, then everybody.
Yeah.
Sorry, we're there.
A couple more.
And and then there's the staffing sheet that gives a, it's really the same kind of information, but I think if you scroll down a little more, it provides a little more information, I think, on Jenny's question on the.
Back to this one, sorry.
Yeah, go down just a little bit more. So, yeah, the fund eighty, communities, so it is the middle schools, the cheer, and then the strength and conditioning, the rotary inter. That's what I was saying. But all, you know, of the increase there, again, most of that is transfer service. And if you backed out the utilities, it would be a hundred and seventy-seven dollars within that, in terms of staffing.
Do you have a segment, insurance adjustment, do you have any of these? We've got two weeks.
I think, I don't think we're going to have any additional cost. Yeah, I finally saw, I finally knew those. I put it in there kind of as a plug, I guess, for a possibility, but I see now our final cost and we won't need any additional.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, what follows the sheet is kind of the detailed budget, so, um, the general fund, revenues, fund balance, expenditures is listed. And then if you kind of scroll through here, there's a couple of the funds I just wanted to highlight, um, but that's just our operating budget, our general fund. And I think the expenses that are on the next page. Special project fund, that's really our gift and donation account. So you see fund twenty-one a lot, and that's our fundraising account and the gifts donation. So kind of budget what we typically a budget the year before, and we'll see a half million dollars comes with the district in terms of gift donation and fundraising. So pretty significant dollars. Um, fund twenty-seven is just a special add portion of our operating budget, so we're required to keep track of that in a separate fund, but it really is, it's part of our annual operation budget.
Yeah, that's an increase of about one point three million over a two-year period.
Yeah. Following fund twenty-seven is our debt service fund, so that's the fund thirty-eight, thirty-nine. The fund forties, you'll see a negative number there, and you may wonder, well, what's what's that negative number? That represents the I O U, um, the district has with the Alcorn, Al's food service.
Okay.
So the original loan there of a hundred, so what we do is we can set it up as a as a capital project, because it was a capital project, it was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then provided the board proof a ten-year loan. So as we pay that off, technically it's funded by our operating budget, but then we transfer that back as they make payments to fund our operating budget each year. So they've been putting in about twenty thousand dollars a year to pay that off, so that's what I assume for next year. So even though it's negative, eventually that will be zero on your debt loan. The food service budget, that is what I would call, I think they would call the construction industry a lag, because we have no idea what our participation is going to be, and we go back to pre-redeos, and the feds haven't released the reimbursement rates yet. And we don't know what those are going to look like. So, um, however, may see there, right now, we have an operating budget of just about fund balance of almost a million dollars, you know, one point four million dollar operating budget. So we're giving well with our food service, and that does help run our cash flow. So, um, what'll happen in the future, uh, to adjust that is necessary. Fund eighty then represents those proposed changes in terms of the community service fund. And then fund ninety is the CCA program and any grants that associated with that program. And then I think the last page is kind of a projection of, you know, and we've got our, um, debt service fund, which increases about forty-eight thousand dollars next year. Um, we're going to have some opportunities to do some, uh, potential early payment on some of our debt, um, and that's what you see kind of in that little darker gray area. You'll see kind of our amortization schedule on a yearly basis. And we fortunately only have really three outstanding debts now, which is the two thousand fifteen referendum, sixteen referendum, and then the options addition project. So that makes up our long-term debt. And then I think the last page, um, just gives a summary of what the tax rate and um, mill rate and impact on property values could look like. And again, the levy increase is just under six percent, five point nine seven, assuming we get a three percent increase in the equalized value, it's about a two point eight nine percent increase on mill rate, and then the impact on individual tax values is what's listed before, tend to use the two hundred thousand as kind of a, um, indicator, and you can kind of see the percent and the dollar change. And again, this is based on equalized value, and we all realize we pay our taxes based on assessed value, so it does vary from that. So that's the first draft of the twenty-two, twenty-three district budget.
The only question I have is, you can go to the PDF on page, bottom of the page, but it's in the special project funds.
Page nine?
Yep, at the bottom. Yep. Um, in that line one hundred instruction, what's the difference between why it's three seventy-six and six sixty-one? Is that added to, added?
Yeah. The, the difference there was when we closed out, it used to be our, our, um, people activity accounts, which was called, which was in fund sixty, and Department of Public Construction did away with that and moved everything into twenty-one. So we used to have a separate fund sixty, which is a people activity fund for our people activity accounts, and when the, I actually came back to the government account and standard for it, if you ask, we changed the criteria, what is or isn't beat that, all of those people activity accounts moved over to the one twenty-one, so just a real elevation. Yeah, that's why you see that large increase.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Any questions? Otherwise, we'll see it again. If you think of anything. All right, first reading of modifications and additions to the handles. All right. The personnel committee had met twice on these modifications here, and the first is we wanted to clarify and make sure that everybody's, the vast majority of all of our staff do the job of staying on top of their license and getting that submitted, and we understand the DPI can lag sometimes, and we can also check the status and see if something's been ripe for. So it's just making sure that they have the copy of that current license. And we want to put in there that if you're going to move up on the salary schedule, we need to provide us with that license, although it's also terms of employment, so technically if someone doesn't have it, we could dismiss them. I'll tell you that, you know, obviously you guys know as a school board, we've never dismissed anyone for not having that. There's some situations where we're really working hand in hand with someone to get that license in order, um, depending on the area in which they work, there's different requirements or criteria. Um, to be frank, we, we've had a handful of special education teachers struggle with, it's called the fork exam. And so we know that, we're aware of that, we'll work with them, and we, you know, have waived those type portions with them. We've also worked with state legislators to change the law on that, and they do have an alternative.
Yes, we, some other school district, they were talking about the same thing.
Yeah.
That they were having a problem, so it's not just us.
No, this is widespread all around the state. It's a very obnoxious test, and a lot of our teachers in special education, they're generalists in a lot of different areas, so they didn't necessarily specialize just in the early childhood literacy, and that's what the fork covers. And then on top of that, a number of our teachers in special education may also have gone through dealing with certain disabilities, and that's why they're passionate about being those teachers too, and so they can struggle on exams in time. So I wanted to clarify that. Um, we did some update on the language or clarification related to PTO time. We stuck with the language of days, because a day is relevant based on how many hours they work, but this is way to professional staff, we want clarification for when they start mid-year, as opposed to reducing that you don't get two PTO days because you're going to mediate, you get one PTO day for professional staff. For the support staff, it would be, uh, the same scenario, so that's what that language is in there for. Um, again, here's the compensation as well, not all, most support staff positions don't require the license, but some of the positions do, and in order for us to get special education reimbursement and so forth, we need to, they need to have those licenses, so we have that in there. And I believe this is also, um, further down, we will, when they go to do their license renewal, uh, we'll cover the cost for that, um, for the special ed or the support staff or professionals for that. It's not, it it's a hundred dollars, which, you know, you're an hourly employee and doing that, it's a hard to fill a position in the area, and helping to cover that cost, and it's unique because they happen to be a special education career professional, they have to pay it, but, you know, other areas or other positions didn't have to.
And the reimbursement is just like thirty percent of their compensation, so the cost of the license is a hundred dollars, and the reimbursement is over ten thousand dollars. So if they don't have that license, we can't claim that special end reimbursement.
Yeah. Yeah, worth a lot more to make sure they have that.
Yeah, right.
Yes, and then the the last side, and we had quite a bit of discussion on this, and there was some, you know, I was split amongst the personnel committee on the perspective, but everybody felt that it should come to the full board for discussion. And currently, we do not have a, anything in the handbook that would restrict electronic recordings or or give guidance on that. We, the only reason why it's coming up now is we had a incident that, um, Taylor and Bill that went through HR where, um, there were some employees being recorded without their their knowledge. And so that brought up, you know, turning while looking at it from the legal standpoint and so forth, and Taylor did originally reach out to WASB, which is the Free Legal Advice or School Board Association, and they gave some insight there after the last board meeting, and we decided to table it because we wanted to, um, make sure we have the the proper recommendation. This is Boardman and Clark's recommended language, they said this would be, you know, their recommendation for us to have this in the handbook. I just want to be clear, it's completely up to the board's discretion whether to put that language in the handbook or not. When we looked at other school districts, about half of them have language related to it, the other half don't. Um, I know from the personnel committee, and I'm just summarizing, you guys can chime in in a second, but, um, you know, there was a sentiment that, well, there's a state statute, and one perspective is, let's just stick to what the state statute is regarding this and not have anything in the handbook related to it. And the other perspective that, well, if legal's providing this as a recommendation, you know, perhaps we should have it in. I, I can't get, I I can see both sides to that, and I think Bill shared it as well, and I've never had a deal with it in nine years, this incident that came up wouldn't be covered by that anyway, it shouldn't have been happening, we can address that outside of that, so it's not, as we would say, something that I would, you know, fall in sword for or plant my flag in, or I, it's just something that I feel legal made a recommendation, the board should consider whether they want to put that in.
And just to clarify, this is not giving, this is not, um, requiring consent, it's just requiring that everyone in the room be notified.
Be notified, yeah. Like we do at the beginning of the board meeting, that just so everyone knows, this funds, this this is being recorded.
This is notice as a public.
Yeah.
So that, that I don't think necessarily involves in the.
It doesn't appear right.
But if you have, you know, an incident where you have a group of people in there and someone is recording, it might be for not even nefarious reasons, it just might be.
Or note taking purposes.
Right, or just like, you know, I'm going to do a TikTok, or, you know, something like that and use it personally, then the other people in the room should be aware that it's being recorded. That's where, that's the side I come down, that I think this is fine. I just, um.
Anytime you're on a phone call and it's being recorded, they have to tell you.
Right, but state law says only one person, yes, the person recording has to know, but and participate, but.
Isn't it one to one though?
Isn't it?
There's multiple, there's multiple people, doesn't that change?
Just one.
Just one.
One to have to consent.
Right.
You're going to be a multiple people in the room.
Yeah, only one.
You mean multiple people in the room?
Yeah.
And only one person has to consent.
Correct.
Correct. But that person has to participate in the conversation, and they can't just leave the recording and leave.
So it's sort of like a wiretapping kind of situation, really, that.
So are we talking employee to employee, like employee to administrator, employee to family?
It's like.
All of you.
Any of all of us.
And this version, and I think you're leading that shit this already, is probably a little less than what the legal council recommended, because they had both consent and notice on the recommendation.
Right, so we relinquished the consent, you know, fortunately that.
So if you tell everyone that I'm recording it, there's a, a trust, you're creating a trust, when you're, you're breaking a trust of them just going to secretly record it. And you know, when you record things, people are just, they, they stay more within the the letter of the law and what, think about what they say.
Right.
Um, so I don't, I think it protects both sides.
Yeah, I would, I would have a peer, parent teacher conferences if we thought our families were all being recorded.
Right, right, and i- if they're told they are, and that's, that's one thing.
Right.
Right, but to give a teacher or even a parent the ability to record a conversation and not let everybody else know, I think is, like Barb said, it doesn't build trust.
Paul, did you want to share your perspective or your thought on that?
Well, not really, I did with the the committee, and, um, I just, I don't, I don't know. I can't think real quickly right now, I'm having some issues, but, um, I just think it it has to be a, a protection for he said, she said, a, a student approaching a, a teacher, uh, threatening a physical altercation. Knowing that I can record that and then call the parents and say, you know, Johnny did this, now it's not Johnny goes home and says, oh, I would never do that, oh, no, you did that. Um, there, there's too many situations, and and I think, um, as long as people are participating within the guidelines of the state statute, it should be allowed, but that's just me.
Age limit, like can you record minors as a teacher?
The state statute doesn't speak.
It doesn't.
No, it doesn't at all.
So this would basically, you know, the state statute doesn't require you to give notice or to get consent for the other individual, this doesn't require consent, it just requires you to let them know that you mind recording the conversation. Any other discussion, otherwise, I think we've seen a vote on the handbook language. We'll see.
Is there a benefit to our administrators being able to record, like when they're doing interviews with?
Yeah, we, I have recorded in my career, but when I do, I I let them know, you're being, and I, I really reserve that for if I feel it's going to be a very serious conversation when I want action taken. I, in a prior district, I let social services know that our mandated report, I'm recording this so that we have a document on our end that we made this report, and they were out there really quick. Um, so I, but I only used to, probably three times in my career that way. What we do is best practice, I I do encourage the administrators to, if you feel there's going to be a serious conversation, to not have that conversation by yourself.
Right.
Bring in your admin assistant, or bring in another fellow principal.
Right.
But in, and we have seen in recent hearings where there can be wildly different versions of conversations, so I could see advantages to it, that was really relevant to having that documented, but it's not a, it's, our administrators, to my knowledge, don't really, the recording of a conversation means very rare, if it all happened.
But if they did, they would have to let whoever is part of the president know, let them know.
If this were.
Right.
Yes, yeah.
So I see it as protecting both sides.
I agree.
I agree.
All right, yeah, it is just a first reading, so, okay. Let's see, I guess we'll do the revised policies. Um, these are really simple, they're, well, the co-curricular one, not so much, it's just, we know this through healthy. It's just, we notice throughout the year, every year, you know, when we have our policies and things come up that weren't thought of, we make notes of them. One was, we have a restriction for students to serve on prom court and homecoming court, but we didn't have snow court included in that. So.
Great.
One more, we'd like to, they would like to have that added in that provision. It doesn't prevent the students from going to the dance, it's just serving in that public court position, just like homecoming and prom. And then the other is a, they noticed that the, the language should actually, we should have a not be served concurrently on the academically ineligible and the co-curricular violation. Because what happens when a kid's got a co-curricular violation, there's not a lot of motivation to maintain academic eligibility. So in order to serve that co-curricular penalty, they want the kid to be academically eligible as well. I believe those, well, that's the same. I understand there where it's repeated, yeah. Okay, then the others, I can pull up any if you want, but they're just changing the names here.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, which we are required by federal guidelines that we need to have that.
She'll see it.
Refinishing the district district.
All right, this is the season where we do see a lot of movement, although we see that extend later in the year as well. We want to thank Lauren Seer, I know Lauren had two of my own kids, I really appreciate she's a fantastic teacher. She accepted a position close to home. Haley Brusco had three of my kids, I want to thank her as well. I know she's going to take some time to live with her family and indicate she'd love to return down the, down the road, come back. Geraldine, we want to thank her for her service, she also accepted a position closer to her home. Sarah Squares has also resigned as a fourth grade teacher. Alice Jordan has also resigned, she's been a middle school special education teacher. She accepted a position in her own district of West Hollywood, is my understanding. Ashley Warner is a support staff member, Lena Grecel, as well, Lena is, I had a great conversation with Lena. She's going to work for Disney World doing Bay Street Shit.
And she loves, she feels great, you know, just lives busy, so it's great.
She said I, that if she changes her mind after a few months, that she really hopes it will take her back. She's been wonderful, so. Jordan Kaiser accepted a position with Boris University over in Dubuque as an assistant soccer coach. Want to thank him for his service. And we have a transfer of Veronica Johnson, we went from Westside to Timmets. And you guys can all read there, are there any that you want to go through on any of these?
Oh, there was one question I had, just go over to the right just a little bit. Somebody, it said it was an incomplete sentence. Paul, who did he?
Oh, Jeff Baron.
Oh, good.
At the metal school, yeah. Paul, well, and I could, I don't want to shortchange these guys, because people online, they, they just admitted the video. But, yeah, Kayla Benowitz is joining us as a fourth grade teacher, Paul Jacobson. He's coming to us from Beloit, he's being a longtime resident. And Elkhorn Beau Ash is joining us as a middle school special education teacher. Gary Todd is a sign language interpreter. Bill Sargent, Julian Sargent, will be joining us on part-time tech head teacher of the high school. Ryan Radke is a high school special education teacher and Kayla Martell is a high school specialist. Kayla will be, and I wanted, I do want to make a note. Kayla will be replacing Brittany Welch, who had accepted the position and then withdrew for some other matters there. And so Kayla will be wonderful, she is joining us from the Lake Home, so.
Oh, she's going to?
Yeah. All right, questions?
I move to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for June thirteenth, twenty twenty two, including no employment contracts, condition upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screening as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So move the second tip for the personal recommendation sheet for June thirteenth, twenty twenty two, including no employment contracts, condition upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screening as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martell?
Yes.
Oh, Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
School gifts.
All right. I could have to bring the board notes with someone that I could share.
Six thousand dollar donation from the Herb Cole Educational Foundation, it's going to the middle school to use of discretion, Mr. McBurney. Margaret Block has donated fifty baskets of various books to Jackson Elementary valued at four hundred dollars. American Transmission has donated three hundred dollars to the middle school for the purchase of trees. The Holton Foundation has donated three thousand dollars to the high school band department and five hundred dollars to the middle school.
It's amazing. It is. And I don't know, have we, did you ever state at one of the school board meetings, Jason, that the reason we've got the Herb Cole Educational Foundation donation was because Mr. McBurney won?
Yes, Mr. McBurney was selected as a Herb Cole principal of the year. So as part of that, they received a six thousand dollar donation to use of their discretion.
It's amazing.
Yeah.
They have a few over the years.
Looking for a motion of pure generous gifts.
I move to approve the generous gifts as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moving second to approve the generous gifts of Herb Cole Educational Foundation, Margaret Block, the American, American Transmission, the Holton Foundation as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martell?
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
All right, I just wanted to, I, I put in there, at least it's been at the forefront of my mind because I, I have a weekly meeting with the superintendents and a lot of them have these discussions. There's been a, this sense of a lot of employee movement and, you know, in some communities, they're really upset over the transition movement. And so I was feeling, I, well, gee, what's, where are we at, what's that been like and how does that compare? We have a spreadsheet where we track every resignation, the rationale. We also do exit surveys for all of our, our staff members as well. And so I asked Jody to pull the data from just the past three years, so I included that in the board notes. I would expect, you know, we're still, I know the contracts are coming due this timeframe. We don't have a lot of movement from now until the beginning of the school year, but it wouldn't surprise me if they had another two to five positions open. I would say that's fairly typical in the past trend. So that would give you an idea of kind of where we're at. You'll see the, the support staff number is only at, at five right now. I think that number unfortunately, I, I hope it doesn't shift, but you'll see we had a lot of transition that past year through the twenty twenty two and that support staff movement and that hourly wage positions in particular. So I, I just wanted to share that with the board in case you were curious and wondering where we're at on that. To give you an idea, our professional staff is roughly two hundred and fifty staff members. So it's, it's trending around five to seven percent. Terminal rate amongst the professional staff, which is, it's actually really good compared to the national average, which is over fifteen percent compared to here.
But like a lot of these here are moving closer to home and economics.
But yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
It may have been kind of the straw that broke the camel's back, the time away from home.
Right.
And family, but then, you know, fuel prices and, and the economy could play a big part.
Yeah, and I know on, on some of our teachers, and it typically hasn't been salary, it's been closer to home. I mean, that's why when you're communicating from the Milwaukee area, a lot of our teachers live in that Milwaukee area. They can't find housing in our district.
Yeah, right.
For news airs, I hear that there's a large development going in down by the DMV and Jones', which that'll take years to come. But what? Well, anyways, our teachers, we struggle with that. So I can present you the, the, I'll share data with the city council next week as well, but the, the housing issues push our teachers out. And as there's more and more of a shortage amongst educators, those districts in the lower suburbs have more and more opportunities open as well. So there is a lot more of mobility.
Wow, and it's not just, it's not just it's pushing our teachers out, it's putting our students in other school districts. Because we don't have, I mean, we have people who want to build in Elkhorn and there's no place to build.
Yeah. So that's what I have, I thought it was interesting to have a look at and see what we're at.
Appreciate it.
That's all I have.
Paul, I'm like.
Second.
Call me by name.
All right, Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhard? Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martell?
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.